Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order Thursday night, July 11th, 2013's public hearing and plan commission and town board meeting. I'd like to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Public hearing number one is to rezone a B3 general business district parcel with restrictions
to remove the limiting restrictions and reestablish the parcel as B3 general business with count restrictions. It's presented by the property owner Sunset and Prairie LLC. The project name is Dunkin' Donuts. The petitioner is Mark Schneider. And what the petitioner is seeking is approval of a rezone to remove the restrictions that regulate access and easements, specifically a drive-through restaurant and a second entrance off of Prairie. And those were prohibited by two ordinances that were put in place back in 2004 by both the town and county. So we'll open that up to anybody who would like to speak on that. Use the microphone. We need your name and address.
My name is Bill James, and I represent St. Vincent de Paul. Of course, we own the land directly north and west of the property that we're talking about tonight. We certainly do not have a problem with this. We think it would be a good addition to our town and also to the businesses along Sunset.
Thank you. Yes, please, Commander.
My name is Anton Lyszek. I live at West 247, South 3078 Prairie. Now, this is going to be right in my front door. How is that going to affect me to get in and out of my driveway? You've got the stop and go right there, and you've got the entrance to St. Vincent de Paul. Why do you need a second street, a second entrance there? Because you have all the traffic coming out of these factories coming down, and then you have five houses that are there trying to get out of their driveway. We ain't going to be able to get out of our driveway. We're going to be stuck here. Right now, at three o'clock in the afternoon, you've got one heck of a time getting out of your driveway. And if you put the road there, that's really going to hamper everybody. And besides that, if I go to sell my house, who's going to want to have that in their front yard? I'm not against the restaurant, just the entrance coming out of Prairie Avenue. Why can't you use the one by St. Vincent de Paul?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Radke, South 42, West 25448 Dale Drive. You guys have seen me before. We've been here before. Dunkin' Donuts has been here before. They were turned away. So I'll give you a quick, five-minute rendition of where we're at. The ordinance was in place. The owner developer, the town planner, forgot that there was an ordinance. The 11th hour, we figured it out. It was stopped. Three months ago, Dunkin' Donuts came before this very board, and they were given 30 days to come back. Now we're at 90 days. They're here. What happened with the timed extension? But either way, regardless, the ordinance was put in place by the town, the county, and the city, all working together, put a strategic plan for that property together so that the homeowners didn't have the ridiculousness going out. Nobody wants to have a drive-through, yeah? Drive-throughs are similar to the way the dirty bookstore's are. Nobody wants them. They're very regulated. Nobody wants a drive-through. Tied to this is the driveway easement restriction that's also extended to the future development on the east side of Prairie. That's why the restrictions are there for the entrances and the exits on Prairie, for the other development that nobody remembers. And when that gets developed, what's going to happen? They agreed when the grocery store was built to put in a truck entrance, and a truck entrance is what it was supposed to be. Grocery stores long gone. When the ordinance was in place, the grocery store was empty. But now you've got a driveway that's supposed to be a truck entrance that you use for drop-offs? That's fine. But at one of the meetings, I remembered that it came from one of the planners from Dunkin' Donuts that said, "If it's congested on Sunset, they'll just find their easy way out." They're smart. The drivers will figure it out. What are they going to do? Go through the back entrance? Go over the speed bump? Go over the bump that says in the driveway danger to get the collection people to come out? Come on, that's not strategic planning. There is an engineer around here that would agree that that's a strategic plan and that that's acceptable. Let them figure it out? Come on. At the time that the complex was built, we were given the choice of going to the east side or the west side of the building that we're in. We came before the board. The board said, "You can't put in a drive-through." Okay, that's pretty simple. We'll take the east side. You come in off of Sunset, our restaurant's right there. I'm not going to go to the other side. The only reason to be there would be to put a drive-through in, but I was told they can't have it? Done. No discussion. Nobody said, "Hey, let's see if we can make this go away." We had plans for both sides of it. Didn't matter. Sorry, guys, go away. We did. Pickensav came in. They wanted to put a grocery store in there. Remember that? There's a restriction on how big a grocery store can be. So they said, "Sorry, we understand there's a restriction." They moved down the street. Unfortunately, Kohl's ran out of business, or A&amp;P, whatever you want to call them. So the building sat vacant for a long time. But nonetheless, the restrictions are still in there. Since then, we had several others that came to this same very place and approached the landlord and said, "We want a drive-through." Quiznos came before the board. In 2004, the minutes that I sent you all back in April specifically mentioned them and the problem that they had with the drive-through. Can't have one. Sorry. Cousins asked about putting a drive-through in. Can't have one. Sorry. Milos, Milos, whatever it's called, same thing, wanted to put in a drive-through. You can't have it. Now, wouldn't it be strange if all four of those people came together and said, "Hey, we lost revenue. You now allow a drive-through?" What would that be? Hector, what kind of a bill would that be for you to try and represent that and fight? You'd probably talk to millions of dollars in revenue. Again, the restrictions were put there to protect the area. We came here with general capital. They came with us to this very board. They came with Quiznos. And yet they forgot there was a restriction? I'd like to think they forgot. I'd like to think the human nature still is good. I don't know. What about the elderly facility? One of the reasons that a drive-through was prohibited was the elderly facility. You walk to dogs on that boulevard. Every day, they go through there. Want a drive-through? I don't think so. The neighbors, they've all protested. They all got copies of it. I sent them a jamie. I believe we got 11 landowners that are adjacent to the property that said, "Don't do it. Don't want it." Most of them are here tonight. Most of them are tired of it. Nobody wants to come here and sit here until 2:00 AM for the evening. It's ridiculous. The ordinance is in place. You can't have it. End of story. So what are they going to do? We're going to go to the city. That's the big threat everybody does. Aldi's and Walgreens, same thing. We're going to go to the city. For what? What are they going to get if they go to the city? Higher taxes? You can bet on it. Water and sewer? They already got it. That property already has city water and sewer. So you're going to pay higher taxes, you're going to go to the city to put a drive-through in for a coffee shop? Come on. Don't listen to those threats. That's ridiculous. The only other thing I can think of is fire and police protection. I don't know if the town can handle it if there's a fire over there. You've done pretty well so far. The city can do better. What about police? We use the sheriff. We use the county sheriff. So they'll get city protection? That's worth the higher taxes? No way. So let's not forget as well, the ordinance is in place through the city and through the county. So you're next to the city. It doesn't mean your ordinance goes away. It doesn't mean you can have a drive-through. You've got to go through the same meeting. You've got to go through the same groups, but with the city. There's no guarantee they're going to do it. They've already said you can't. They already went and tried the village authority part. Didn't work? They came back and said, "You can't do that." What are you talking about, village authority? The ordinance is in place. You can't have it. End of story. I don't know if you all read it. I sent it to you today, but one of the property owners on Prairie sent back to protest and said, "I don't want it here." And he sums it up real good and real quick, and this is what it's all about. He said, and I'll quote it, "I'm not opposed to Dunkin' Donuts, but I'm opposed to the zoning change." That's what it's all about. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Hines, West 230, South 3827, Oakdale Drive. I'm going to start with something I wasn't planning to start with, but the last line, "No public response or applause." It may be deemed out of order. I don't know. "I don't think the past matters at all." Not only this group, but any group and every group. They change their minds all the time. The land was not supposed to be a baseball diamond. And it became a baseball diamond. People change their minds all the time. I think you just need to look forward, decide what you want to do. Doesn't matter what happened in 2004. Make up your own minds. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Chetney. S-31, W-24873, Green Valley Drive. I really only got one question. When this original development took place, I was among the group that fought it many, many years ago, and we were all notified. This particular one, I found out from the neighbors, and I received no notification on this, and I'm wondering, is there an ordinance that has changed? Or why, all of a sudden, the south side of Green Valley Drive was eliminated from this letter? Because I had no notification, and I too was objected to. So I would just like an answer.
Can I respond to that in the public hearing?
Our office would not have consulted on this. That is the responsibility of the clerk. I don't have any personal knowledge of what notification you did get. I don't have any specific knowledge of the distance of your property from the specific parcel that is being rezoned. The difference that I can point to between now and previously might be that the proximity of the entire track was different than what the proximity is between a parcel which is at the corner of the entire lot. I'm sorry, I can't provide you with any more information.
What is the limit, Hector? Is it 300 feet? So if your property is within 300 feet of the subject property, then you would receive a notification from the town?
I wanted to see if that changed or not, because that's what it was on the last one.
It has not changed.
Okay. Because I'd like to receive the notification. There would have been more objections, because the traffic issue is one of the big things on Sunset Drive, that we've got a problem. Coming around to that stoplight, especially in the morning and the afternoon, you've got a heck of a time getting out, just getting out of a subdivision. And I think this will enhance it even more, and I think that's not the thing you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Candy Kennes. I'm former owner of Le Cafe Bistro, and I really don't really remember any of your faces. I think maybe you were on the board, maybe, when I came or when I opened Le Cafe Bistro. And, you know, like Jim said, you know, General Capital came with. My daughter worked at Starbucks as a manager for five, six years and said to me, "You know, Mom, if you, you know, get a drive-through, you'll have a third more business guaranteed, a third more business." Sounds good to me. That's something, you know, opening a new business, you want to do. And so, you know, I did come and ask for... I was given permission through General Capital to do it, but needed to get the board's approval. And I was told, "No, I could not." So I lost what I consider a third, you know, more business that I could have received by being told, "No, I could not have a drive-through." And I just think it's very, very unfair that all the years I was open and struggling and wanting more business and, you know, doing all of that, that now it would just be a flip of a pen and somebody else could do it, but I couldn't. So I just want you to consider that, that, you know, that's lost revenue. That's lost revenue. And so it's something to consider for them and just the fairness of it all. So I was told that we couldn't because of the senior center behind as well and the traffic that would, you know, it would be on that boulevard. And so that was one of the reasons why they said, "No," as well as because of the null on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Dennis Locke, South 31, West 24881, Sunset Drive. I have to agree with the man from Cafe Obuseo that why should you change that ordinance? It was put in place for a reason, so that none of that stuff could go in. If you change it, who's to say what's going to go in then or whatever? Because they're adding on another building to that. So what else are you guys going to let in there besides a drive-through? Strongly against it for the traffic reasons. And I don't know, before, at one of the meetings, he had like 100 and some petitions against it. I don't know how many are for it, how many petitions you got for it. I mean, you've got to start looking at the numbers, the people that are against it. There's a lot just down Sunset between Masters E, they think it is, and Tires Plus that's up for sale, which I think would be a more suited area, because it's got a little frontage rolling that the traffic would have to go in and get into their business or whatever. I don't know if anyone's looked into that. That's all I got to say to this.
Thank you. I'll turn it off.
Sherry Radke. I live at S-42, W-25448 Dale Drive. I'm also owner of Le Cafe Bistro. Not trying to beat a dead horse, but I'm with everybody else that I'm against changing the ordinance. We need to keep in mind that this is still mostly a residential area. The businesses in this area right now are small businesses. We do create some of the traffic that we're talking about on Sunset right now. But our main concern through this whole thing, since Dunkin' Donuts has been coming in, even though we did talk about the drive-through restrictions when our business was open, as our previous owner did mention, our main concern coming in has been the traffic and the safety issue. I just think it's going to be ridiculous what they're proposing. I don't think anybody here understands how high traffic that area can be with just the businesses and the residents that we have there right now. That parking lot, I think, is going to be a mess. People are going to come in, in every single entrance that they can. If anybody's been a commuter in the morning for whatever reason, going to work, and you're running late, you sometimes forget about paying attention to what's going on around you. And again, there are elderly people walking, there are dogs in the morning, there are people coming and going to some of the other businesses, as well as neighbors that are walking in that area. I don't know what the benefits are putting in, changing the ordinance. I'm looking at it going, there are no benefits to this, other than creating more traffic in that area. And benefits for the businesses that might want to go right there, and I think there are many other places where these businesses could go in a higher traffic area, rather than, again, trying to rezone this particular area. And I think that's going to change the zone. I don't know if it's just they can do it just for that parking lot. Those restrictions are for that whole area. So I'm just concerned, you change the restrictions for this business, the next business comes in and says why you did it for them, so you have to do it for us too. So, you know, keep the bottom line in mind, keep the residents in mind, keep the integrity of the town in mind when you're taking this to vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Circus. I'm with General Capital. And I came here instead of Dunkin' Donuts. Dunkin' Donuts actually went through months of hearings. We did several contract extensions with them. They ultimately had a little bit of deal fatigue because it was taking so long, and so we've come back. As you all know, the site plan has been approved by a plan commission and town board already. So I don't think issues of traffic or access need to be reconsidered. Citizens have been heard. These are some of the same comments that have been brought before you in previous As far as the driveway and access and traffic conflicts, et cetera, that was all evaluated by two civil engineers, by the town planner. It was deemed to be safe and appropriate. And I would point out, for those who fear excessive traffic causing unsafe conditions, if you compare the amount of traffic that was generated by the Kohl's grocery store with what a small strip center, 4,000 square feet, is going to generate versus the 40,000 square foot grocery store, I think it's apparent that the traffic law should be a lot less. St. Vincent de Paul generates a lot less traffic than the grocery store. I would also point out that the petitions, I don't know how many of those residents actually live across from the property, but the signatures were not duly signed and acknowledged as required by state statute and town ordinance. And in terms of these petitions, you know, whether, I don't know about the argument about, "You couldn't do it before, so you shouldn't be able to do it now." I'm not sure why historically all of these conditions were added to the underlying B3 They don't seem to make a lot of sense logically. I don't have the historical memory to go back and understand why they kind of imposed those conditions, because I wasn't involved back in 2004. But really, what we're trying to do is something that's consistent with the underlying B3 We're just removing some of these superfluous restrictions. And basically, I think what's happening tonight is the town board had approved the site plan and the plan of operations and simply attached a caveat to that that said, "Let's just make sure that we're not in conflict with anything." So we went back and looked at the past ordinances and found out that there was some language that could be construed to be in conflict. And we brought it to the town's attention. The town's attorney drafted a new amendment that would clear up those conflicting restrictions. And now we're basically reverting back to something very close to the underlying zoning with no restrictions. And so I feel like now that this amendment has been drafted, we've complied with the extra step the town board asked to take, and now there should be no further review necessary, because we do have the approved plan. In terms of the mostly residential area, again, I would say that those types of concerns have been dealt with and accounted and were considered prior to the review. But I would also point out that, of course, this is in a commercial zone. It's Zone B3. There's a commercial all around this outlot, as well as up and down Sunset Drive. So we feel it's very appropriate use, and we hope to see this finally approved tonight. This is the last piece of our development that we've done over the years. We've got a very good relationship with the town. We developed the grocery store, the strip center where Cafe Bistro is. We did the senior housing, and now this is the final piece which Dunkin' Donuts would like to develop. So we appreciate your consideration. See you later.
Thank you. We've got a couple. Enough to give me the long one. I've got three pages. Bear with me. Since, this is from Stephen Schellen. "Since we were unable to attend the public hearing on July 11th, 2013, please read this email aloud to the audience and place it into the public record as our objection to any change in the existing zoning or restrictions on the named property. We formally petition the town of Waukesha Board of Supervisors and Joint Plan Commission to reject the request to rezone and remove the existing restrictions on the property named Lot 2 on Certified Survey Map 10833. As owners and third-generation family occupants of the home at South 31 West 24841 Sunset Drive, we vigorously object to any rezoning or repeal of the enroll ordinances 153-29ZT1237A, 159-28ZT1237C, and 159-54ZT1237D, which are currently in force regarding the properties directly south of us on Sunset Drive, especially pertaining to Lot 2 as described in the notice of the public hearing hand-delivered to us by, I'm sorry, delivered to us by certified mail, number 701230500182550782 on June 27th, 2013. The restrictions noted for discussion during this public hearing for removal were placed on the property as a whole and agreed to be reasonable and enduring such that the neighbors would be protected in the future, not being further negatively impacted in the future, and also not object to the proposed single-building development on the property, nor that is Lot 1. This reflects two significant points in fact. Number one, no outlots or further divisions of that property were ever mentioned during the permitting, governmental reviews, and approvals in development process for the existing building. Number two, additional access was to be given between the original Lot 1 and Sunset or Prairie, and that those currently exist. Since this property is in the town of Waukesha, it requires administrative approval by the Waukesha County Department of Parks and Land Use. That approval and the approval looks beyond the boundaries of the property, the new Lot 2, that interfaces with external entities such as roads and traffic, traffic and pedestrian safety on non-town roads and sidewalks, impact on the neighboring residents and how the surrounding neighborhood is impacted, both near term and long term. That review and approval should not be eliminated and should continue to consider the effect it will have on our property, our family, and our neighborhood. When our good neighbors, who formerly lived on the properties noted in Certified Survey Map 966 Lots 1, 2, and 3, sold their homes for the development of the Kohl's Food and Other Stores to the west, that was supposed to be the end of the commercial development of the property. It brought us a local, high-quality food store and good neighbor. However, temporary, the life of that business was at the location. That is what the restrictions were all about. At that time, we lost significant property value, but had some buffer with the single store, so they were left on Sunset Drive. A large, open parking lot, reasonable landscaping along Sunset, and no traffic entrances or exits. Since that store closed and St. Vincent de Paul's store, another good neighbor, opened, the conditions affecting our property have not changed much, except for increased traffic caused mainly by many new businesses on the former Godfrey Distribution Center property located a distance to the west. But it, in this, has further decreased our property values and made our ability to enter and leave our driveway further difficult, challenging, and occasionally terrifying when eastbound vehicles race to the Alayda Prairie. More traffic backing up or racing to make the turn north onto Prairie to access another business will further block our ability to access our driveway and degrade our property value. The businesses proposed at the northwest corner of Sunset and Prairie, the Dunkin' Donuts building, with drive-through and multiple other unnamed and unknown tenants, will be directly across from our front room and main bedroom windows. It will be an eyesore. It will generate more disposable trash that will end up on our lawn. Drive-through traffic at all hours of the day or night will be positioned to shine their headlights and look directly into our home. Signs placed on the proposed building and property will also shine in our windows. Removing the current restrictions starts us down a slippery slope of lost control of our residential environment on the south side of Sunset Drive. I am sure we'll in next year request to extend the current short eastbound turn lane on Sunset to facilitate the anticipated traffic increase for turns northbound onto Prairie, which would be driven by any development on the Lot 2 property. That will make it impossible for us to access our driveway and force us to circle the entire neighborhood south of us to approach the drive from the west. That is unreasonable. What could the lack of current restrictions bring to the town and neighborhood? First, we will seek who the unnamed tenants may be, for which we will have given up any semblance of control. With comparable quality vacancies elsewhere along Sunset, just look at the strip mall vacancies across from the now vacant Kmart. The space will be commodity-priced, and that means to fill the spaces, the rents must be lowered, which usually equals either lower quality or cycling of tenants. Next, we may see a request for an access directly onto Sunset Drive, then a CSM with a new Lot 3 for another building and more of the same. Without the current restrictions, the town and its residents will have sparse regulations in place to control this development. Additional taxes on the property will not make up for the loss and have little benefit to local neighbors that bear the burden. We and our neighbors see no benefit from the development, and we bear the full burden, loss of value, loss of privacy, and loss of access. There are vacant buildings to the east of the rail tracks where there are commercial properties on both sides of Sunset that can be utilized for any business proposed for Lot 2. In fact, there used to be a Dunkin' Donuts in that area, but it apparently did not succeed as a business. What makes anyone think it would succeed at this location where the access is much poorer? Please consider facts and say, "Thanks, but no. The restrictions stay in place." The restrictions stay in place, live with the rules that were already agreed upon when you created Lot 2. Respectfully submitted, Stephen Schellen, P.E., South 31, West 24841 Sunset Drive." You're up.
Okay, the first comment is from Pat in Ville-Halvey. "I don't know on Dunkin' or any other business in this area. Do not need traffic, litter, and noise. Would like some of this town to stay as it was. It's the reason a lot of us moved here. Dunkin' failed at Sunset Bowl location, so why build another? Sunset Prairie intersection cannot handle a lot of traffic that Dunkin' would probably create." The second is from Megan Bird. "Hello, I frequently visit La Cafe Bistro, and I cannot believe that there was even thought of putting in a drive-through. There's enough traffic as is, and it would become an incredibly unsafe area." The third one is from Jim Walker. His address is West 227, South 4145 Concord Court. "I won't be able to attend the meeting on Thursday, July 11, but I would like to voice a concern about adding a drive-through on Sunset Drive and Prairie Avenue. Since I'm there frequently during peak times in the morning and afternoon, I have seen the congestion that happens during those times. Also during summer, there have been motorized carts run by the residents of Berkshire trying to navigate an already busy driveway. My feeling is that there was a very good reason for the original ordinance, and it should be on it."
Anybody else before we wrap up the public hearing?
Yeah. Read a letter. It's an email from Jason Fruth, from Planning and Zoning Manager, Waukesha County Department of Public Parks and Land Use. "In response to requests for correspondence relative to the rezone conditions that apply to the properties in the vicinity of Sunset Drive and Prairie Avenue, I'm sending this note. Waukesha County Parks and Land Use Department staff believes that the proposal to remove the County Park and Planning Commission from the site plan review activities relative Sunset Prairie properties that are subject of the rezone ordinance is appropriate. However, please note that any such ordinance's tax change would require the approval of Town of Waukesha and the Waukesha County Board, as is the case with all zoning amendments. The condition that requires Park and Planning Commission approval of site plans was placed by the town prior to the site being developed. And with build-out nearly complete, we do not believe that the county review of the site plans with the project area is necessary. Furthermore, the subject properties are located outside of the county's basic zoning code and shoreline floodwater protection ordinance jurisdictional limits. This condition is quite unusual, and I believe was likely applied because the scope and scale of the then-contemplated development of the project was quite large."
Anybody else before we wrap it up? Going once?